Good evening. Welcome to the Town of Berniston Select Board Meeting for Wednesday, May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll call the meeting to order at six oh one P. M. Uh, this meeting, meeting is being broadcast live on B N C T V and livestreamed on YouTube. To find B N C T V on YouTube, go to YouTube dot com and search for Berniston Norfield Community Television. This meeting will be available for later viewing by following the link at the town of Berniston dot org. You can also watch channel ten seventy-five on your Comcast dial in Berniston. We'll start with the warrants tonight. I would entertain a motion for the payroll warrant in the amount of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and five cents.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion for the vendor warrant in the amount of one hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, just a couple notes on that. The Franklin County Technical School Assessment of ninety-four thousand, five hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty cents. And there was a health insurance invoice in there as well for twelve thousand, nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and twenty-five cents. Those two combined make up the biggest chunk of that hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting minutes. I'd entertain a motion for the regular meeting minutes of April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd entertain a motion for the Joint Select Board and Recreation Commission Meeting Minutes of May seventh, two thousand and twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
So the public hearing, we have to wait till six fifteen to start that as it was duly posted to be that. So we'll have to wait till that time for that. So we'll continue on with some of our other business tonight until we get to that appointed time. We'll move on to calendar announcements. The two thousand and twenty-five annual town meeting. The annual town meeting is scheduled for Saturday, May seventeenth at ten A. M. At the Pioneer Valley Regional School Auditorium. We hope to see everybody there. That's this Saturday, the seventeenth at ten A. M. At Pioneer. Green Committee meeting. The Green Committee will meet on Monday, May nineteenth at six P. M. At the Town Hall. There'd be a tax work off program committee meeting. Uh, they will meet on Tuesday, May twentieth at nine thirty A. M. At the Town Hall. The forty-ninth Annual Gas Engine Show Flea Market and Craft Fair. The forty-ninth Annual Gas Engine Show Flea Market and Craft Fair, the largest fundraiser of the year for the United Church of Berniston, is scheduled on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, May twenty-third through May twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five at Pratt Field, two fifty-seven South Street in Berniston. If you'd like to volunteer for this great event, contact the United Church office at four one three, six four eight, nine three zero six. Uh, the Berniston two thousand and twenty-five Memorial Day Celebration. The Berniston two thousand and twenty-five Memorial Day Celebration will be held on Memorial Day, Monday, May twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. The Town of Berniston Memorial Day Parade will kick off at ten A. M. The parade will start at the parking lot at sixteen South Street and wind its way to the Center Cemetery. There will be re-flaying ceremonies at the Veterans Memorial and Cushman Library along the way. Local storyteller Barry Dietz will give the keynote address. Music will be provided by the Fall Town String Band and the combined Berniston and Norfield Elementary School Bands. We hope to see you all there. Uh, the Berniston Senior Center Council on Aging Open House. The Senior Center and Council on Aging Open House will be held on Friday, May thirtieth, and Saturday, May thirty-first. Events start at nine A. M. Detailed information can be found on the event calendar on the town website at W W W dot town of Berniston dot org. If you are interested and able to volunteer to help, please give the Senior Center a call.
Four one three.
Four one three, six four eight, five four one three. New Cushman Library hours effective June first, two thousand and twenty-five. New hours for the Cushman Library will begin June first, two thousand and twenty-five. The new hours are Monday from one P. M. To seven P. M., Wednesday from ten A. M. To six P. M., and Saturday from ten A. M. To three P. M. That's not less hours. It's just different hours when they're finding.
If that survey they did.
Yeah, they did a survey to see when people would like it to be open and that's what they're gonna give a shot. If it doesn't work out, they'll switch it up again. Uh, the United Arc Doug Flutie Five K Walk Run. The United Arc continues to support people living with intellectual, intellectual and developmental disabilities in achieving the universal goals of inclusion, choice, and independence. They are hosting the second annual United Arc Doug Flutie Walk Run here in Berniston on Saturday, June seventh, at ten thirty A. M. At Pratt Field. Come join us for a fun and inclusive run, walk, or roll with a post-race refreshment at Incandescent Brewery. You can register now at W W W dot fluties five K dot com. Berniston Cemetery Corporation. The Berniston Cemetery Corporation is holding a bingo fundraiser on Saturday, June fourteenth, at the United Church of Berniston. All funds will go towards repair of historic veterans monuments at the Center Cemetery in Berniston. Doors will open at five P. M. And games start at six. Snacks and drinks are available for purchase, cash, or check only. Still got a few minutes to wait for that. Is there any citizens concerned? Not already on the agenda? You guys, I think mostly are already on the agenda for the public hearing, but is there anybody else? Chris, huh? Chris was here. Chris is here. You wanna come up and start yours? Chris is Chris Slocum, West Town Clerks, here to discuss the two thousand and twenty-five Town Clerk Office Payroll Budget. What you got?
So basically, because I've been without an assistant for several months, my budget for my salary is going to not be available through the end of the fiscal year. However, there is enough in the assistant town clerk's pay because we've been without one for four months. Then, that at the end of the season, if we can just transfer some of those funds over to cover anything that I end up doing as an overage. I'm gonna still try to keep my numbers, my hours down enough, but I still wanna at least do twenty hours a week. So I meet the requirement for vacation time and whatnot. But I also been kinda busy with elections and town meeting and, you know, so.
So you have enough in the joint payroll?
Yes, between the two. So I just wanna make sure it's okay to transfer some of the funds at the end of the year.
It shouldn't be a big deal and the request needs to come into finance. I have kind of a request here to be signed by both families and by the select board.
So it starts at finance and then comes to select board?
Right. And um and there might not be a need for any transfer at all.
It's all payroll, right?
If it's all payroll, it won't require it. But if, if it has to take some from expense or get some from somebody else, then that's what we have to figure out between us and.
And I think there'll still even be money left over in the assistant town clerks.
So it sounds like it's all payroll?
It's all payroll.
Yeah, it's all payroll.
Then does she still need the signatures? No.
Okay.
Do you just need our approval?
I just wanted to let you know that that's where we're at.
I've started watching all the accounts.
Anybody else have any questions? Sounds good. Anything else for us while you're here? We've got six minutes.
Six minutes? No, just been busy with, you know, we did, we sent out a second notice for those people who didn't return their census form. So we sent out a second notice just this week. So people, we sent about two hundred.
So folks, if you get the census form, fill it out. If you go two years without it.
It's, it's two cycles, two red, um, federal election cycles. So.
It potentially can be dropped off.
Yes, if you didn't vote in this past election, you might get deleted from the voter registration. So it's important to, to get those sent in. And other than that, our new assistant is doing great. She's, uh, so we're looking forward to getting the town meeting done with on Saturday.
Saturday, yeah. Karen, do you still have the brown envelope with the use forms in it?
The brown envelope with?
Use forms for like?
Yes.
Just so we can, might as well move on to those while we have time.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
Be done with me.
I think the fear don't last.
Yeah, go ahead.
That's where we're at. We're at those. I didn't realize they walked away. We're waiting on one piece of paper. We have five more minutes to wait for it. Thank you, thank you.
This is quite a turnout.
Move on to a couple more pieces of business. We have five more minutes before we can start the public hearing. We have a Berniston Elementary School Usage Request. I think you gentlemen all saw it. I'd entertain a motion to approve the Berniston Elementary School Usage Request for the Berniston Planning Board to host a public forum of the two thousand and twenty-five Berniston Open Space and Rec Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have a town public facility use application. I'd entertain a motion to approve the public facility use application for Mister Mark Dupree for Pratt Field. Pratt Field will be used for pasture rotation and his herd of sheep sometime after the gas engine show. Mister Dupree, Dupree was given a copy of the new animal control bylaw and was informed that the sheep must be removed before the November two thousand and twenty-five soccer jamboree.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, just one little piece of discussion. I did talk to Brian Minor, who kind of oversees that project. And he would like to keep them into the parking lot area that we use for the gas engine show and the soccer jamboree. So the scat doesn't end up onto the soccer fields. I think that's a pretty reasonable request. Anybody?
Do we need to modify the request to?
He typically will touch base with Brian and Brian will direct him as to where to go.
Okay.
He just wanted to make sure we were good with that.
I do think we need to add, I just thought of this, that the, the, the five K run, they huddle, they start the race in that area exactly where you're, what you're talking about. So maybe he could move, uh, bring the sheep over after June seventh, not after the gas engine show.
Can you communicate?
I will, but I just, we have to make that motion, include that in there and then I'll, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion on the use application? All those in favor?
Aye.
We have one more. The special municipal employee Melissa Murphy. I'd entertain a motion to accept the disclosure by special municipal employee Melissa Murphy, who's on the Board of Assessors, of a financial interest in a municipal contract as required by Mass General Law, Chapter two sixty-eight A, section twenty C. The contract is between the Senior Center and Melissa Murphy Embroidery, custom apparel for approximately thirteen hundred dollars worth of T-shirts and hats in support of the Age and Dementia Friendly Communities Initiative Grant. The appeal will be apparel, thank you, will be purchased using funds from the grant.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Geez, we still got two minutes to kill.
Don't read so, don't read so fast.
You can do the Cushman, the Cushman Park, I think, maybe or no?
Cushman Hall Committee one. Okay, we'll do this. Should be the last one. Cushman Hall Committee Park Project. The Cushman Hall, see, can't talk slow. Committee convened on Wednesday, May seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, and unanimously voted to approve the addition of three picnic tables and one park bench on the Cushman Park grounds. As you may know, Cushman Park is situated in and around a wetland area. Therefore, this project requires a request for determination of applicability, otherwise known as an R D A, under the Wetlands Protection Act to ensure compliance with environmental regulations prior to the placement of the picnic tables and the bench. The committee also unanimously approved, voted to approve the Conservation Agent Savannah Kitchen to oversee the R D A process and application submission. Miss Kitchen will require an additional six hours to her regular work schedule to prepare and submit the necessary documentation. All project-related expenditures, including Miss Kitchen's additional hours, will be funded through the Cushman Hall Committee Fund. The committee remains committed to enhancing the accessibility and usability of Cushman Park while adhering to the conservation standards. I'd entertain a motion to approve six additional hours of work for Conservation Agent Savannah Kitchen to oversee the R D A filing process.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Look at that, right there, right there, six fifteen. Brian, come on up. So I'm gonna call the Franklin Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority Public Hearing to order at six fifteen P. M. On May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And you want me to read my little blurb first or?
You could, yeah.
Okay. This is gonna be a public hearing. Uh, the purpose of this hearing is to update the public on the status of the town's F Y twenty-two, twenty-three Massachusetts Community Development Block Grant, known as C D V G Programs. Grant programs being administered by the Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority on behalf of the Town of Berniston, including housing rehabilitation and the Berniston Country Estates Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. This hearing will also address the need for a reduction in scope of work for the Berniston Country Estates Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Based on two rounds of bidding that resulted in estimates beyond available funds for the project, the project engineer Huntley Associates, P. C., recommends a reduction in the scope of work to address necessary repairs and replacements.
Great, thank you. So I'm, uh, Brian McHugh. I'm the Director of Community Development at Franklin County Regional Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Thank you for having me. As Brian said, we're gonna update you on the, um, F Y twenty-two, twenty-three Community Development Block Grant. The first thing, uh, I wanted to cover was the housing rehab program. Uh, we had earmarked a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards housing rehab to rehab three units in town. Uh, we did receive some program income, which is, um, the money from paybacks from previous loans that were given out in the town, uh, in the amount of eighty-five thousand dollars. So we put that into the grant application, into the, the grant budget. And we're able to, we're gonna be able to, to do five units in town now. We've completed four so far. One is out to bid right now. So we've exceeded our goal, but, you know, because we received some money back. We're, we have an agreement with you, um, to recycle that money when it comes back to put into the, uh, a, a, a project or a program that would, that where the money originated, which was, which was a housing rehab program. With the Berniston Country Estates Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project, I'm sure a lot of people have heard about this. The, uh, the entire project was included in the grant application. It was based on a, a cost estimate that we, we had received from Huntley Associates, the, the engineer for the project. It included the, uh, the replacement of the, the, uh, Leach Field, new pump house, new pumps, all new lines throughout the whole park. Uh, it was put out to bid, uh, early summer last year. The prices that we had received from the engineer included construction in two thousand and twenty-four. So it was a, it was a, uh, an escalator on top of the, uh, the estimate that we had received. Uh, because these things usually lag about a, a year and a half behind when the grant applications are put in, when you can actually do the work. So it was earmarked, or it was slated to be done last, uh, last summer. Uh, the first round of bidding produced no bids. And there are various reasons for that. We don't know exactly what it was, but I, um, I think it had to do more with feedback that I got was that there was some, uh, costs that the contractors were gonna have to carry that were sort of unknown costs. And it was when they were a little, little reluctant to provide. That got corrected. It got put out to bid again, uh, with bids coming in last fall. All of them came in over budget. We have nine hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars for this project, uh, came in. The lowest one was a million seven, seventy-eight thousand by J. S. Ray. You can see that it said it was disqualified. Had nothing to do with the, with that company. It just that they had used the wrong bid form for this, for the second round of funding. And in that bid form, it included unit pricing for some things that would determine, you needed to, needed to use right bid form so they can determine who gets the bid. So that got, that got thrown out. Uh, it was still over budget. We wouldn't have been able to award it anyway because that did not include contingency. We have to, we have to factor in contingency on all these projects. So if something comes up that's unforeseen, unknown, any latent conditions, we have to deal with. We have money in there. Usually it's a ten percent contingency. So we weren't able to, to award the contract then. And over the course of the winter time, we've, we've been, spring, um, with consultation with the, with the park and with the engineer and Board of Health, uh, it was decided that the project could be split up into two phases, possibly three, depending on what, you know, how much the rest of it's gonna cost. We've met with the Board of Health, engineers met with the Board of Health, uh, B. C. Is met with the Board of Health, um, to, to lay out what we've, we're proposing, which is to do under Phase One, uh, the Leach Field and the pumps in the existing pump house. And then, um, as of last Wednesday, the Board of Health meeting, um, they, it was, the, the idea, the plans were, uh, were reviewed in there suggesting that there's an additional tank that goes in prior to the pump, the pump house. Just so there's another settling chamber and doesn't overtax the pumps that are gonna be put in there. It's, there's no telling when the rest of the, the rest of the project will, will, will happen. So they wanted to be assured that there's, there are any solids that are being pumped into the, the Leach Field that would prematurely, you know, do that system in. So, um, the engineer is working on that. Um, the, the next meeting is June fifth, is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And we're hoping that that meeting, that the, the Board of Health will approve of the new design. Uh, they've improved it in the concept of it, but they need to have plans to, to actually stamp and approve. Uh, so we would like to, uh, move forward with this and put it out to bid again with the, you know, Phase One being Leach Field, new ten, new pumps in this, in the, uh, existing pump house and the new, uh, twelve thousand gallon, um, uh, tank. It's, it will be in series with the five thousand gallon tanks that's there. Okay? So we are looking to, number one, extend this, this grant to the end of this year. Um, it's something that you have in your paperwork there to, to extend it, uh, another six months from June thirtieth. And also, we were hoping to get approval from you to, to revise the program. It's, it's a program revision that we have to submit to the state that basically reduces, you know, and we have to, we have to put together an argument with the state why we're doing it this way. We're already working on that. I've gotten assurances from the state that they'll be okay with this. Uh, but officially, the town has to, has to vote to allow us to split it up this way. Uh, but I will say that it needs to be conditional. In other words, we can't go through with it unless the Board of Health approves of, of the design and that isn't gonna happen for a few weeks. So I want this to be a conditional approval that based on, on that, you know, approval from the Board of Health, that you will allow us to submit a program revision on your, on your account on, uh, on your behalf to reduce the scope of work in this round of funding. That's pretty much it in a nutshell.
So obviously you've had communications with the folks in this room.
Yes.
For the big contingency. So they're all in line with what you're?
Well, I can't speak for them, but I, I, I think so. I don't know.
Is anybody on this board have any questions?
No, I'm pretty clear.
Anybody in the audience have a question or a comment? If you do, if you could come up and state who you are, so we can get you recorded.
Hi, I'm Anne Wagner. I'm the president of the association.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. And I just wanted to add with the Board of Health waiting for this plan, it was so even with just Phase One, it would be Title V compliant. That is why they wanted the, before everything else goes through. So.
Makes sense.
That's, I just wanted to say that, that with the first option, it would be that.
Great.
With the reduced scope that presumably we're gonna agree to, does that, what would be left for subsequent funding? It could be some estimate of that?
Uh, how much is the rest of it gonna cost or how much is available?
And where is that money gonna come from?
Well, we don't know how much that's gonna cost. I'm still waiting on a cost estimate for even this Phase One. We got a preliminary estimate. But based on what the Board of Health have talked about last week, adding in the new tank, we still don't have, we need a new cost for that. What's upstream from there? Um, it hasn't been carved out.
Pun intended?
What's that?
No pun intended?
Yeah. It hasn't been carved out. And then we have, you know, like, you know, the, the associate, B. C. E. Is the one who was hired the engineer. So any of those asking the engineer to do any more additional work, like providing a cost estimate beyond that, is gonna cost that money and it'd be best left, you know, for the future. So because we don't know, it could happen in two years, could happen in five years. And the cost then is really gonna, are gonna be unknown. So I, I can't say that. I will say that the original cost estimate for the whole ball of wax was fit into this, into this, and it just didn't happen. And now we're in this situation where we're a year out from when we were, it was gonna be constructed. So, uh, I don't know. As far as funding goes, I don't know if there's gonna be funding available through our, you know, our, our group. It's, you know, there's the cycle for a, a small town, which you are, is not every year. It's like, could be five years done a lot, it could be six years done a lot, you know? So I don't, I don't know. And that's if, you know, if, if there's funding available, you know, we don't, we don't know what's gonna happen.
Are we looking for state funding, federal funding?
It's federal.
Federal.
Yeah.
Okay. That answers a lot.
Yes. Anybody else have any other questions, comments? Okay, I'll move on. I'd entertain a motion to approve the extension of the F Y twenty-two, twenty-three Berniston C D V G period of performance to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, conditional on the Berniston Board of Health approval of the project.
Second.
No, you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so moved.
Second.
Any other discussion by anybody that you're good with that?
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second piece of this, I would entertain a motion to approve the program revision to reflect a reduction in the scope of the Berniston Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project as stated by Brian McHugh.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion?
If, if, let's say nothing else can happen after the revision. Everything's still good. Where it's functioning, it's.
Yeah.
Right? So let's say you can do nothing else after that first phase, still good.
Well, as Anne pointed out, that, that, that it will be Title V compliant.
It's big.
As it was proposed last week, it wouldn't have been. So they put that on there because the Board of Health felt like, we don't know when it's gonna happen. We don't wanna. So, um, it is, it still requires a variance, um, but it's still, it could be done. So it's, it's, it's compliant.
For years, we've been, um, replacing the laterals 'cause it's all that orange berg. So if they've collapsed, the park has paid for that on its own already. And we're still in a position to, to do that unless they all collapse at once.
I have a question. Fred Rice in the park. I mean, the, the bidding going out, are all them bidders or the, at the contractors awarded a bid again?
Are they allowed to bid again?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Because I mean, the lowest one got disqualified for some reason. And is he allowed to bid at his normal?
Yeah, he didn't get disqualified because of, on merit or on perform, past performance. It was just that they used the wrong form.
Doesn't everybody get the same form when he sent out a bid package?
Yeah, they do. And then he, there was, he used the form from the first round of bidding and it had changed because things were added to that that were not on the first one. And he knew it right away. It was like, it was like it was a.
I mean, 'cause he's local, he's good.
Well, hopefully they did.
And, you know, he don't have to check, chuck things from. And you know, he don't have to check, chuck things from low and everywhere else you get here.
So, yeah.
Show them quality at a short distance.
Yeah, it is, it is because, as I was explaining to Brian before, like on that bid form, it included some unit pricing for like fill and all that and it has to be on there so in order to and and everyone knew it in the room, even the other bidders, they knew it, it couldn't be accepted. And it was, it was a mistake on their part, they understood, but they had pulled up the bid stuff from the first round, which was, you know, different than the second round. And as a public procurement, we just couldn't accept it, it's just not allowed. But again, they couldn't, they wouldn't have been able to get the job anyway, cause it was still over budget.
Yeah, well, it was a close.
Yeah, I mean, it's closest, but yeah, there was no wiggle room there.
Point four is a little steep, let's just roll downhill, you know?
Any other discussion? All those in favor on that motion?
Aye.
You just close the close the air.
An enter take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You guys set a record for attendance, this is excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Remember to come to the annual town meeting on Saturday morning.
Yeah.
Ten o'clock.
We'd love to have, thank you.
It's an important meeting.
Now, where are we at here?
Just the reading?
We're reading the town warrant.
Think we're reading the town warrant, right? We'll let everybody clear out first, so Tyler can.
Jane, you wanna come up?
I want a comfy chair.
My nephew was the youngest living in town, eighteen years old.
Nice.
I just wanted to say, something so important, it has sure taken.
This is a long time.
And if something happens over there, we're all screwed.
Yep, yep.
Who do we thank? The government?
Brian's doing the whole.
I know, we're praying very hard that this gets done.
We are too, we were hoping it was done last summer.
Me too.
And then we'd have been all.
They gotta replace one piece, they dug yesterday, foot and a half, foot and three quarters, there's a water table, you can't even get to the fight. That's a magnificent house.
All right, thanks for coming.
You guys have a good evening.
You too. Keep us in the loop.
Thank you for having me.
Okay, we're gonna move on to reading of the annual town warrant for Saturday's town meeting. So I'll start off, the town of Berniston, the annual town meeting warrant, it will be held at Pioneer Valley Regional School Auditorium, ninety seven F Sumner Turner Road, Northfield, Mass. on May seventeenth, twenty twenty five at ten AM. To either of the constables of the town of Berniston and the county of Franklin, greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you're hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and town affairs to meet at the Pioneer Valley Regional School Auditorium, ninety seven F Sumner Turner Road, Northfield, Massachusetts, on Saturday, the seventeenth day of May, two thousand twenty five, at ten o'clock in the morning, to conduct the annual business meeting then and there to act upon the following articles. We all good to that point?
Yep.
Okay, article one.
Let's clear what we're.
Yeah, I know. Uh to act upon the reports of the town clerk, town treasurer, select board, school committees, all other town officers and committees as contained in the annual town report for twenty twenty four, and to hear an oral report from the select board on the status of the charity lot trust fund, to hear a report from the sixth town regional planning board on what to expect in the coming months regarding the proposed regionalization, to hear a report from the select board, to hear a report from the finance committee chair regarding regarding the F Y twenty six town budget. Any issues there so far?
Nope.
Everybody's good? Article two, to see if the town of Berniston will authorize the select board to apply for and accept state and or federal monies and to expend any monies received as set forth in the appropriate application and or document, or take any voter votes relative thereto. That's a pretty standard boilerplate, right?
Yep.
Article three, to see if the town will vote to authorize a select board to accept and expend without further appropriation any monies which may be made available from the Commonwealth through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation for improvements to town roads or take any voter votes relative thereto. That's another boilerplate, no issues there? Article four, to see if the town will vote to authorize a treasurer to enter into compensating balance agreements for fiscal year twenty twenty six, commencing on July first, twenty twenty five, excuse me, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three F, or take any voter votes relative thereto. Again, that's boilerplate. Go ahead, Bri, read the line.
Okay, article five, to see if the town will vote under the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter forty one, Section one oh eight, or any amendments thereto, to fix the salaries of all elected officials for fiscal year two thousand twenty six, and raise and appropriate any sum or sums therefore and further to, you want me to read all the graphs too?
Maybe just the totals, but not the individuals unless Jane, you see anything wrong with the the big charts? I mean, just maybe just the raise and appropriate.
I think just the raise.
The first part.
Raise and appropriate.
Six hundred and thirty one thousand, four hundred and sixty seven dollars and sixty six cents, transfer from free cash, two hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred ninety six dollars, eighty cents, transfer from the barber fund, five hundred dollars, for a total of eight hundred and thirty nine thousand, seven hundred sixty four, forty six cents. For the payroll and maintenance of the several departments of the of the town in accordance with the amounts recommended by the finance committee as shown in the first column of the following table, table one, or pass any vote or votes relative thereto. Should be an N on that. Where are you? Finance committee as shown.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah. Says show.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment?
Absolutely.
Um I will be offering an amendment.
Okay.
Um because at our last joint meeting, we decided to take um some more money out of free cash. So what it's going to do is change the raise and appropriate amount um and um and the free cash amount. The free cash amount is gonna go up to two hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety six dollars.
And eighty cents?
And eighty cents.
And the raise and appropriate will go down?
Will go down to five ninety one, four sixty seven, sixty six. And I will verify those numbers before I write out the amendment.
Okay. Well, it's going in the right direction, no raise and appropriate down.
Yep, yes, everything we can.
And the total will be the same anyway.
The total stays the same.
Gotcha.
It was um.
Table one is one of those long ones.
Well, it was the forty thousand dollars, we were gonna do a raise and appropriate part of the reserve fund.
Right.
And at the last minute, we decided to take it all from free cash.
Yep.
So.
What does that leave us with free cash?
It leaves us uh seven thousand nine hundred.
Okay.
I know you were gonna ask that, seven thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and um four cents maybe, four cents.
In case something pops up between the annual meeting and June thirtieth.
Well, I wait till we get here.
Okay.
Okay, so article five is good then.
Yes, I think if you wanna comment on what's different, uh maybe we should comment on the fact that um we're asking the town to approve transferring two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to the reserve fund. And the reason that we're asking for such a huge increase into the reserve fund is because we do not know what's gonna happen with grants, and the grants affect more than one department. So rather than try to supplement any the departments on an individual basis, the finance committee and the select board together decided that this was a good way to handle it, to put it into the reserve fund. And then if a grant doesn't come through and they can't fund it some other way, then we can have a discussion about how much of the missing grant we can afford to fund. Um, cause it it's gonna be a challenging, challenging game to to try to take care of everybody, even with that amount of money.
Right, it's true.
Mm-hmm.
Do you want me to read article six? Might as well. Tell us when you're cry uncle and we'll switch up again. Uh article six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate eight hundred dollars, transfer from free cash, five thousand dollars, for a total of five thousand eight hundred dollars for Berniston's share of the education expense in accordance with the, wait a minute, sorry, uh in accordance uh with the amounts recommended by the finance committee as shown in the first column of the following table, table two, or pass any vote. Sorry. That's a pretty straightforward one.
It is, yeah.
Article seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate three hundred and thirty two thousand, one hundred and fifty seven dollars, transfer from free cash, six thousand, seven hundred thirty six dollars, sixteen cents, for a total of three hundred thirty eight thousand, eight hundred ninety three dollars and sixteen cents, for Berniston's share of the education expense in accordance with the amounts recommended by the finance committee as shown in the first column of the following table, table three, or pass any vote or votes relative thereto. That's basically the text goal. That's all good. Article eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate three million, five hundred eleven thousand, three hundred and forty dollars, transfer from free cash, ten thousand, twenty dollars, for a total of three million, five hundred twenty one dollars, three hun- five hundred twenty one thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, for Berniston's share of the education expense in accordance with the amounts recommended by the finance committee as shown in the first column of the following table, table four, or pass any votes, vote or votes relative thereto. The select board and finance committee do not recommend the passage of this article. I felt I needed to read that part.
I think it's important, it's a unanimous decision of the finance committee and the select board to not recommend passage of this.
Do you wanna talk about why right now, or wanna wait till Saturday? Well, I mean, we can certainly let the people know, I mean, the school is touting a two percent, to just over two, two point four, whatever it is, percent increase, but that means almost ten percent for the town of Berniston, ten percent.
Increase year over year.
Yeah. And we can't afford that.
Two hundred and ninety nine thousand.
That's my reason why.
Yep.
Not about anybody else, but.
That's the big one.
The increases are weighted specifically toward increases in administration, not in programs, not in education, but in administration. And a lot of that ten percent increase falls to pay raises for the.
The uh the the percentage of our budget is forty two and a half percent they take of our annual budget. Um almost, almost sixty five percent of what we have to raise and appropriate. So you think about that, sixty five cents for every dollar you pay goes to that school for five hundred kids, five hundred and nine wanna be exact.
And falling.
And falling.
Uh, I guess I wanna comment also.
Yeah, sure.
My problem with the budget is the administrative overhead based on the school population. I'm not happy that our share goes up the biggest percentage, but that has nothing to do with the school.
Correct.
It has to do with the fact that our subvaluations in Berniston went up dramatically last year. And so we wound up being the fourteenth um town in the state for growth.
Out of three hundred and fifty one.
Out of three hundred and fifty one. And um that affected state formulas that get used in other computations. And that's why our our share went up so much more than anybody else's. Um so it's, I can't blame the school for that, but I do have a problem, as I said, with uh the whole administrative um portions of the budget that don't help our kids, that we're getting smaller and we're having more administrators.
Additionally, the whole school budget process is intended to be a coming together of the finance committees, the select board, and the school committee to present a budget that is fair, equitable, and reasonable for the three towns. And the select board and the finance committee both were left out of that process, we were basically presented with a here it is, put it on your warrant, uh explanation as to the numbers. It's not a coming together, it's not a conversation, it's not a development of a budget, it is a one-sided process that is failed, failed the townspeople of Berniston, failed the students. It would be one thing to say the increases of ten percent are for programs, for educating our kids, for supporting their growth, but it is way over the top, slanted toward administration.
Well, I'll move on. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate seven hundred eleven thousand, five hundred sixty one dollars, sixty eight cents, transfer from dog license, dog licensing revolving, six thousand, nine hundred ninety seven dollars, for a total of seven hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred fifty eight dollars and sixty eight cents, for contracted services, pension, and insurance expense in accordance with the amounts recommended by the finance committee as shown in the first column of the following table, table five, or pass any voter votes relative thereto. Pretty boilerplate, we all know, insurance went up ridiculously.
Mm-hmm.
And what are you gonna do about it?
Right.
Besides write your legislator and tell him to get that under control.
I have to respond.
Please.
Insurance did go up, but if you look at page nine, um two thirds of the way down the page, it's a it's a wide line that says employee health insurance. Um it's a decrease. Now, how can that be? That can be because while the rates went up, as we've all been told, the number of employees that are subscribing to insurance is not the, and the insurances they are taking are not the same as what we budgeted for last year. So so that change, those changes made the number of them come down. So that's not where the increase came from in here. There is an increase in uh in the building insurance, but not as much as we might have thought it would be, um cause we're covering one more um station. Most of the increases that are in there are, I don't know if I can spot them this quick, are because of the ambulance or the medical, what do we call in there?
Emergency medical.
Emergency medical, so the EMS services, that we are now in an agreement with three other towns, with Northfield being the lead town, for for ambulance service and for emergency medical responses. And because that's now a consortium, Ken, I should have you explain this, it's now a consortium that is providing twenty four hour a day, seven day a week coverage. Um the. The cost to each of the four towns has gone up. And Berniston's increase was over $50,000. It went from $25,000 to $82,400. So that's probably the biggest hit on here. There are other increases, but not in the category of that.
And we also moved a few other things. We cleaned our books up a little bit. There were contracted services that weren't in this table.
Right.
Into this table and took them out of other sections. A little bit of it's that, too.
Right. So some...
Small numbers.
And where those things were, those budgets decreased by the amount that we moved to contracted.
Page 9, middle of the page, it says retiree health insurance. It's a new...
Oh, yes, thank you.
Expense.
We've always reported health insurance as one item. And this year, we decided to divide it and show you employee health insurance and retiree health insurance separately.
So the two of those together, the employee health insurance and the retiree health insurance, add up to...
$194,000, $195,000.
Which coincidentally is the same as appropriated in 05.
Yeah, just about.
Yeah.
And we did the same thing with dental insurance and with life insurance so that we know...
Again, as Brian mentioned, cleaning it up so it's clearer to the voting public where these expenses are.
Anything else with that?
No, I wasn't prepared.
Article 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $1,376,74.98, transfer from landfill receipts $99,997.50, transfer from transfer station recycling account $2,200 for a total of $1,478,272.42 for public services in accordance with the amounts recommended by the Finance Committee as shown in the first column of the following table, Table 6, or pass any vote or votes relative thereto. Any... I'm just scanning through it, so...
The operating expenses on page 10 for the fire department?
They, that includes the expenses for... The old fire station also includes the expenses, anticipated expenses for the new building. And it's, you know, we tried to guess high. And hopefully next year, we'll, we'll have something to base it on and we can come down. But that's a tough one because the price is going up on everything. And then opening a new building.
And the space is set up different than it was with the previous owner, so it's hard to quantify how much oil we're going to use, how much electricity we're going to use.
Right. And the other thing is we moved emergency management out of the police station into the fire station. So that adds an expense over there that is totally different than it was before.
Correct.
Snow and ice expense, we just...
Snow and ice expense, we have to at least budget what we did the year before. And I, and I think the increase in that is all payroll.
All payroll.
For next year. Highway saw a big hit on increase in payroll based on actions that the Select Board took early in the year and are now reflected in the budget. The tree warden is up because he added three days of tree work to, to the annual schedule. So that is three days of payroll and lift rental. You know, if the, if they can't reach them from the ground or conveniently use a ladder, I don't know if they ever do use a ladder, but sometimes they need to have a lift to get to the real tall trees.
We need the tree warden to start drinking more Red Bull because it gives you wings.
Yeah, they go.
Sorry. We do not need him to be doing that.
I don't want him drinking Red Bull and working on tree paths.
Exactly. Me neither.
But you have another reason.
Yeah.
All right.
Anything else? Anybody got...
I'll move on. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash $150,000 for the stabilization accounts in accordance with the amounts recommended by the Finance Committee as shown in the first column of the following table, Table 7, or pass any vote or votes relative thereto.
This is a decrease over what we've been doing for the last couple of years because we were paying ourselves back for a loan that we made to, to...
By the fire station.
To, yeah. Part of it was fire station, but what was other? That, that didn't come out of, that didn't come out of stabilization. I'm sorry. I will know on, I'll know on Saturday. But it...
That's fair.
We, we wanted to, sometimes we use, use stabilization funds to avoid going out for a loan. And that's, and then we try to replace that back into stabilization over a few years. And our standard has always been what you see now, the $50,000 and the $100,000. So when we borrow money from there, then we increase our transfer or raise and appropriate. But usually it comes from free cash and build those funds back up so we're prepared for the next big item that comes down the path.
Article 12, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the Barber Fund the amount of $15,265.67 for the Recreation Commission account and further to transfer from the Quanis Trust Unrestricted Account the sum of $1,000 to the Quanis Recreation Equipment Fund to be expended by the Recreation Commission for the recreation programs and field maintenance or take any vote or votes relative thereto. Pretty straightforward.
Any comment?
This, this article includes $15,265 to go to the Recreation Commission account. That $15,000 includes payroll for a new position. And that new position is a part-time recreation director. That's not apparent when you read this article, but it is the explanation. And I, and I will be explaining it again on Saturday. So the $15,000 is, $5,265 is for a clerk and the $10,000 is for the rec director. And that's not the whole payroll for the rec director because that account has a balance in it which automatically carries forward. So they didn't need the full amount they asked for because it's already in the account.
Article 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $1,200 for maintenance at the Burke Flat Cemetery, formerly called Village or Old Cemetery, or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
That's a normal one.
Except we keep changing its name.
We should settle on a name. Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $450 for the street and cemetery flag replacement account or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
This is a different amount than we usually put in here. The account has sufficient funds to take care of the street flags, but we have changed the name, we are changing the name of this account to include the cemetery flags. And those are the flags that go on the veterans' graves. And those flags, this year, the invoice for that has already been received, but can't be paid until July 1. And the invoice is for $450. And so that's why this amount is, is here instead of the 300 that you usually see.
Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $1,000, $13,000 exactly for any fiscal year 26 town audit or take any vote or votes relative thereto. This is the third of three?
This is an increase because when we were all meeting, we decided that we should do the audit on FY...
25.
FY '25. This says FY '26.
Ah-ha. Good catch.
So I will write up another amendment unless Gary lets me do a typo correction. Sometimes he lets me do typo corrections. We decided that we should do an audit on when this year's books are closed. FY '25 books are closed because we hired new accountants for FY '24. And at that time, we were doing the audit on FY '23, closing out the prior accountant. And we felt that this accountant has, will now have been here two years and we should, ought to do the audit rather than waiting another year. Normally, we would be doing it in three-year cycles, which would be next year. But we thought it was important to move it up and make sure we're not...
That's why it's a bigger figure. It's usually, usually a figure there, just not that big.
Right. It's usually 8,000. So it's an addition... Well, we asked Karen to get a price so we, we could have a quote. And...
That's what we needed to fund that.
We have a ton of, we have a commitment with them which they know we will have to cancel if this vote doesn't pass. But that's why it's doubling up, sort of.
Not a concern. We shouldn't, we should let the townspeople know that it's, we're doing this audit as a cautionary, not as a concern that there's anything wrong.
Right. The recommendation that the finance, State Finance Committee group makes and that the state makes, they haven't demanded it of us yet. But they would have, they would have recommended that we should have done the, but that audit on FY '24, the first year that, you know, it should have been an audit on '23 and '24, right next to each other. So that, you know, you're auditing your new accountant right in the first year. And we didn't do that.
Article 16, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $2,400 for the second of five installments for the Board of Assessors fiscal year '29 revaluation or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
Standard.
Standard. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $5,000 for the mosquito control district or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
Standard.
We haven't killed a mosquito yet.
I knew he was going to say that. I was waiting.
$5,000 for the district, and we're not killing mosquitoes.
It's not a mosquito kill district.
Right. And Jane always says that, too.
I've got, my first mosquito bite of the season today.
Wow. Good for you.
And he got away. And he got away. Thanks for the 5,000, guys. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the amount of $65,000 and transfer from free cash the amount of $65,000 for a total of $130,000 for the second of 10 installments for the fire station loan or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
That was our agreement with Mr. Raymond.
Yep.
And it's interest-free.
Right. That's the best part. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $5,000 or to be added to the Employee Retirement Separation Account or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
Standard, too.
Standard.
Article 20, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $5,000 to be added to the other post-employment benefits, so-called OPEB Trust Fund, or take any votes, vote or votes relative thereto.
Standard.
Twenty, Article 21, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $9,400 to be added to the culvert replacement account or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
We try to bring that account back up to his base level so he always has the same amount, which is nodding my head right now, 20,000.
25,000.
Town has a lot of culverts and they're all...
Right.
It is amazing how much they cost.
Yes. It is. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $15,000 for the renovate, construct, town buildings account or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
Standard. When you have that account, it rolls over from year to year. I think it's over $50,000. No, I didn't look that up, but I roll for it Saturday.
Okay.
And we keep that in a fund so that when one of our old buildings, because all of our buildings are really antiques.
Except for the police station.
Except for the police station, yes. But, but they're all historic buildings.
And the new fire station.
And the, and the highway garage isn't really historic, right?
So we never know what kind of repairs they might need and we try to keep up with the repairs although we are facing some really big expenses.
Yes.
Particularly for town hall.
Article 23, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $5,000 to a tax collection software fund in order to provide the future purchase of a tax collection software or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
This is the second year that we're funding this fund. What Mona has now, she likes very much. It works very good, but she can't get the support that she once could. And so she recommended that in order to be prepared for when she has to switch to a more available software.
Robust. Supported. Supported is key there, yes.
Yeah.
Article 24, to see if the town will vote to transfer from free cash the amount of $587,000 and further to transfer from the stabilization fund the amount of $400,000 for a total of $987,000 in order to pay the entire balance due on the fire truck borrowing approved at the April 29, 2024 Annual Town Meeting or take any vote or votes relative thereto. This article requires a two-thirds majority vote.
Yes. This will pay off the loan that we currently have for the fire truck. And back in Article 1, you approved $45,000 interest. That is the interest charge for this first year. So by paying this off, we will save up to $45,000 for the next X number of years because we did not take the loan out for 10 years or five years. We took it out for one year and then with the plan that we would be rewriting it every year. And that's one approach to handling loans. Because we had such a large free cash this year, we came up with this idea that, that we would take that 587 from free cash and that we're going to give ourselves a loan out of stabilization for 400,000. So next year, we'll be putting more back into stabilization. Hope everybody likes that and that you'll all vote yes.
Makes sense.
Article 25, to see if the town will vote to authorize the following spending limits for revolving funds in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 4... for revolving funds in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a Half, and the Town of Berniston bylaw for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, or take any votes, vote or votes relative thereto.
So this is, I'm sorry.
It's pretty standard, right?
Pretty standard. I just want to point out that it establishes the maximum amount that these entities in the first column can spend out of their revolving fund during the year. Even if they get more money in, they can't spend more than this limit. It can be adjusted if a problem comes up, and they come before our two committees.
Both committees, not just the finance?
No, I think it's both committees.
Okay.
And you did change dog licenses, I think.
I, the dog licenses changed this year, and we will be discussing the dog license revolving fund again before next annual meeting.
We also added Fire and Water District.
That was added last year.
Right, it wasn't on, it was, I was just making a point that it was added to this chart. Because, yeah, we added the account last year, but the 1200 was not established last year.
It was. It was not in this chart.
That's what I'm saying.
It was a separate warrant article. It was established last year as a separate warrant.
That's what I'm trying to say. Never mind.
Just wasn't in the chart.
Yeah, it wasn't in the chart.
Article 26, to see if the town will vote to adopt and enact the amendments of the Franklin Regional Council of Governments', so-called FERCOG charter, said amendments having been proposed by a two-thirds majority of the weighted voted, of the full membership of the FERCOG council, and a majority vote of the FERCOG Executive Committee, with said amendments taking full effect immediately upon adoption by a two-thirds of the members' towns, unless a later effective date is otherwise specified, or take any action relative thereto. A two-thirds majority vote by this town meeting is required for adoption and enactment of this article, or take any vote or votes relative thereto.
And that was petitioned by the CAG?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, this article was petitioned by the FRCOG.
And it will be a rep of the CAG.
Yes.
Yeah, Jessica.
And it does require a two-thirds, a two-thirds majority vote, probably should...
And there will be a handout of explanation as to what the changes in the charter are to, available to the voting public on, at the annual meeting. Article 27, to see if the town will vote under the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 39, Section 9, or any amendments thereto, to add a special town meeting and incorporate into the town's annual governance schedule to be held annually in October. The special town meeting will be used to consider and vote on proposed additions, amendments, or revisions to town bylaws, address unforeseen financial or budgetary matters, and that require a special town meeting in accordance with the town's needs, or take any vote or votes relative thereto. This article was petitioned by John Lepore. You are hereby directed to serve this warrant by posting up certified and attested copies thereof at least seven days before the time of holding said meeting at the five places within the town listed below: Berniston Town Hall, 38 Church Street; Berniston Post Office, 9 Center Street; Marshall's Country Store, 44 Church Street; Berniston Senior Center, 20 Church Street; and on the Town of Berniston website, https://townofberniston.org. Hereof fail not and make due return of this notice with your doing thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of said meeting aforesaid, given under our hands this 7th day of May in the year 2025. And it is properly signed and acknowledged by the town clerk, and it's sealed, and Constable Peter Shed has returned it on May 8.
Now, you asked a question. May I?
Sure.
You asked a question about the $7,900 left in free cash.
Oh, yes.
And I told you I'd like to spend as many pennies as I had as possible.
At the finance committee meetings, yes.
Yes, and so I have a suggestion or two. And the first suggestion is that, that extra $5,000 for the audit come out of free cash, and we just raise and appropriate...
It's good, yeah.
The difference, and that again will be an amendment.
Less raising appropriate, it's always a good thing.
The other possibilities are to, and I didn't mark this up, I thought I would remember it, to pay some of the, some of the things that are in the Table 5, the contracted services, like if you take 5,000, we'll still have 2,000 dollars left, so we could, we could pay the LL Data Design, which is at the top of Page 9, LL Data Designs LLC, Town Clerk Software. We paid that from free cash last year, we could pay that again this year, and then we would have $1,000.
I'm not seeing that on Page 9, am I, blind or...
Page, it's Page 8.
Page 8, okay. I'm sorry.
Down at the bottom.
All the $1,190?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Or we can do, you know, a combination of some of these, the LL Data Civic Plus, you know, some of those.
That's the website, yeah.
To come up to close to 7,000.
As opposed to the 5,000, to the...
Well, I, I like the 5,000 because that's a one-time deal, and finance philosophy has always been free cash could use for one-time things.
Okay.
Not for ongoing expense. But also, we want to use it rather than leave it on the table.
Right, right.
What happens if there's a need after the annual meeting, after May 15, or whatever the date is?
17.
17, but before June 30. Where do we come up with the money to...
Well, you couldn't get it from free cash unless you held another annual town meeting.
Okay, that answers that question. Not happening.
No.
Chris loves that one, sure, I have one every other week.
Yeah, too.
Special town.
You love that town meeting, see, you'll have it every week if you had your way.
I'll, I'll have a couple of options to show you before.
Less raise and appropriate.
One, right.
Okay.
I do like the 5,000 for the...
That just leaves you the 2,900, or you can spend on the LL.
We can take the LL out of there, or there might be something else I didn't...
Leaving those options on the table for the annual meeting is confusing. You want to take care of this before that, so you have one amendment that...
You know...
You want to, even leave it up to the, the town to decide?
I have to offer an amendment to each article that, that I, that needs to, or that I want to change.
Okay.
And hopefully, I have concurrence with all of my buddies to change it before we go in there.
Do we have to do another meeting before the meeting?
No.
Okay. We just give you blanket, blank check, make the amendment, and we'll support you.
Well, you don't have to, you can vote no.
Yeah, I don't think so.
But I'll try to get it to you. I'll try to tell you what I've come up with as options. The danger in that is that you'll all come back and...
There you go, forms for special town, for town meeting amendments.
Oh, good, you had them ready. Oh, no, you didn't, you took...
What's scarier, she knows that we're gonna need them.
That's why I have a folder full of them.
Now, by sending us an email, are you violating the open meeting laws, or any foolishness like that?
No, because...
No, I can tell, I can tell you what my recommendations are, as long as you don't discuss it with your board members, or tell me your choices.
Sounds good.
Then that would be a discussion, but to give you information that I'm going to propose at town meeting, that's not.
Okay.
It's if we have discussion, or we try to say, okay, we, we need to decide what we're gonna do, and we're not in a meeting, that would be breaking town meeting, I mean, open meeting law.
Last question I have, I'm gonna pull a Stan Garland. The process of developing this budget, and I think it's a good budget, and I think it's a fair budget, and I think it meets the needs of the town, takes a long time, a huge commitment on the part of the Finance Committee and the Select Board. Basically, we give up our Monday nights from January through last Fri, last Monday.
Well, we made it last that one.
I, I understand. Is there a way that the Select Board and the Finance Committee can work together to shorten that cycle? And I don't know what the magic is, but, so we don't have to meet three times with the Rec. Commission, or you get one shot?
Well, you...
Department heads?
At your meeting last Wednesday, you informed the Rec. Commission that the budget that they had delivered to us, that was it that day or the day before?
Day before, yeah.
The day before was not acceptable.
Too late.
And, and we have started to do stuff like that. We don't, you know, when we have them in, and they've made errors, I don't know, I don't know how, there's no way around that.
Yeah.
If, if you didn't multiply by 1.03, or you did it in your head, or you don't let the spreadsheet add things up for you, and you make an addition error, all of that goes back, because we don't correct your, your budget until we get to the...
That night.
Until we get to the bottom line, and we have to correct it. We give it back to you and say, fix your budget. So usually, people return them within a couple of days. There are exceptions, people who don't, people who think they can change their budget right up until town meeting. I don't know how you get around that.
Okay.
You know, we've gotten a lot stricter than we, we used to be.
Had to keep going that direction.
I think so.
Yeah.
And Jane, I remember, was it a few years ago, whenever it was, probably longer ago than I, than I remember, but we tried to, I was on the Finance Committee at the time, and we tried to standardize their budget form.
Yep.
Say, this is what it has to look like, you know, it, for, for many reasons. One was easeability for the Finance Committee to look at that and go, okay, this, you know, makes sense, or doesn't make sense, or whatever. But maybe an Excel spreadsheet, or whatever spreadsheet class to input formulas is...
Oh, teach them how to use a spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Department heads.
It would be helpful with the warrants as well. The Highway Department, this particular warrant was reduced to writing, handwriting everything in on a spreadsheet, because there were some changes to be made, or additions to be made, so. I think they could all stand a, an Excel course.
Well, but when you, when you say this warrant, and there were changes to be made...
Not, not, not the warrant we just read. I'm talking the, the expense warrant for this week's...
This week's pay.
Pay, yeah. Yeah, there was, half of the highway submission was handwritten, as opposed to...
Well, why did he do that?
I don't know.
Wants to come in at the last minute?
Yeah.
Yeah, he came in in the morning of, and finished, has, you know, checks his box, and catch the bill.
So that's just fraught with peril, as far as making sure that things add up, and I know the accountant checks everything, but it shouldn't be her burden, it should be when you submit an expense, but...
If it's a standardized form with standardized formulas...
Well, in this case, we do have standardized form that's not being used, so good luck with that.
See, that's...
And the standardized form that we sent out to everybody.
Right.
They had to do some select and deletes that fit their particular department or committee, and that was confusing to some people. And then you have people that say they know how to use a spreadsheet, but then when it doesn't add up, and so you click on the total to see what they included in the total, and it's hardcoded in there.
Yep. Defeats the whole purpose of using the spreadsheet.
So one of the services that LL Data does...
Oh, yeah.
Is she offers classes every now and then. She'll send out and blast an email out and say, here's all the classes I'm gonna offer in the month of May. And so town clerks, anybody who needs to brush up on Excel, Word, doing these different...
That'd be great.
Things, is one of the things she offers.
Through Zoom?
And that's included.
Or do you have to go someplace?
No, no, it's $25 per person.
That's a nothing.
For one hour.
Yeah.
For one hour. One hour isn't going to go to these people.
And it specifies what it is, so it might be just one topic of part of Excel.
It's a start.
I'm just saying, throwing it out there that, you know...
We could ask FC Tech to see whether they'd do a training for us, something like that.
That's Justin. Justin runs that program.
Yeah, you find somebody locally.
I think...
Justin as well.
Get an overhead proj, or, I said overhead projector.
Zoom it. You're thinking to yourself, they haven't made those in a long time.
Get a Miniature TV. Get a giant TV with the projector thingy, and Jane, down at the Senior Center, Jane teaches a class to all the department heads.
Yeah, that would work.
Okay.
Just added that to your...
Well, what I have been thinking about, but then I start figuring out how much time it's gonna take, is the other thing that people do is, we ask them for the budget, their budget from last year, and we ask them for what they expended, we ask them for the current year's budget and what they expended last year. Most people do not submit the budget that was approved at town meeting for them. They submit whatever they want to, and it doesn't match what was approved. So, so then, when, when you look at their budgets, and you say, oh, they're not asking for any more XYZ, and then you get to the bottom, and you think, that doesn't quite add up, and so you got last year's stuff out, and, oh, this isn't last year's budget.
But they're, they don't get back from the Finance Committee what was approved.
They are, they know what was approved, they know what was voted at town meeting.
Yeah, I guess they don't feel that way, but they don't feel like they get, they don't know, they, a lot of them go in, this is what they've just said, that they go to town meeting, they don't even know what's been approved, they have to wait to town meeting. They don't get anything back saying, this is what we're going with.
Because it's not approved until...
No, it's not approved yet, but they don't know the difference.
No, they're not, they're not gonna send them back something.
You're missing my point, it's just about the difference in the budget, about what they turned in to Finance Committee isn't the same thing, that's what Jane's saying. But they don't, nothing's coming back to them saying what, because the tables aren't the exact budget on things.
Exactly.
It's not the same, the tables that are in the, in the warrant. It's not the same as what they give the Fin, turn into the Finance Committee, so it's hard to know what's been approved or not approved, so that's why maybe that happens.
Well, part of that is, we don't do line item, bite budgets.
And we don't want to.
Yeah, we don't want to.
I'm just trying to point out why they don't, why the budgets aren't the same. It's not intentional, that they just...
Sure.
Are giving, they're, they're going off of what they turned in in '24, when they go to do their '25 budget.
They have what they turned in in '24, unless they burned it.
Right, yeah, they, they have that, but it's not, like you said, it's not the same as what was approved.
I didn't say that, I said they didn't give us last year's budget.
All right, I just was making a point of that, that we don't, we don't necessarily maybe do a good job of getting back to the department heads of what's been approved.
So how do we fix that?
Huh?
How do we fix that?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
Perhaps a, an individual meeting with the department head, and whoever else wants to attend?
Well, I think as the, maybe, maybe as the Finance Committee says, okay, we're gonna recommend this budget, whatever it is, 450 dollars for flags, simple, approved.
Yeah.
Right, forward it to Karen, she tells the, she tells the flag replacement people, hey, your 450 dollars is going to be recommended, not approved.
That's not, that is voted at town meeting, and they can...
Yeah, that one's specific, that's not a good example. I'm talking about the little, little stuff that they, they'll have on their budget, that's not... not necessarily on one of the five or six, seven tables that's in the warrant, it doesn't tell, you know, you don't know.
Well, I think.
The only thing we vote is salary and expenses.
I guess I'm trying to understand what you're saying because if, if the total, if, if Chris submits a budget for $40,000 and the town meeting approves $40,000.
So that's, okay, that's not.
Her budget's approved for $40,000.
You know what I'm talking about, Chris?
And, and the lines within that budget.
Yeah, let the department heads explain it.
If you're talking about special things like Brian Minor's truck, he knows he's not the truck that made the warrant.
No, she'll explain it.
But the lines within the budget, as long as it, as long as you can't, you know, you can't touch payroll, right? And, but, it's spent however within the lines of their, as long as you don't go over the total and you have, and you can't take it out of payroll accounts. So for expenses of that $40,000 is $10,000, let's just say, we're drawing just rough numbers out there.
Do you have an example?
And, and her expenses consist of the following things.
My budget, here?
My budget, okay? I requested $61,529.94. Finance Committee's recommending $60,439.94, but everything other than the salaries, my expenses, everything, all of my general ledger numbers are now put into three categories instead of the several accounts that I actually have.
So she doesn't know what was approved or what wasn't.
That I submitted, so I don't know where that money, that difference came, is coming out of, is what Karen is saying.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, I don't know, okay, out of all these, this three items here, expenses, elections, and registrations, and registrar stipends, obviously it's going to come out of expenses and elections and registrations, but in there, and I know there's got to be salaries somewhere in here for all the poll workers, right?
Your salaries are budgeted, are recommended at exactly what you requested.
Your expenses went down because we pulled the LL data out and put it in Contracted Services.
Okay.
That's why it went down to $1,190.
So is elections?
Everything else is the same.
Is the salaries for the poll workers still in the elections or is that somewhere else in?
It's in elections, $7,900.50.
Okay.
So you requested the 79, 72, we gave you the 79.
This has been the standard distribution for, for you, for that department since I've been on the Finance Committee.
Right, but what happens now is how does the accountant, the town accountant input our, my budget so that my line items that I submitted for ends up with the right amounts? Because I ended up having to go back through my budget last year because the amounts that the accountant set up was not what I actually had in my line items. My budget was right, it totaled right.
You didn't tell her how you wanted to divide it? She did it on her own?
They did it on their own and didn't, so then I had to go back through.
Might be worth a five-minute meeting with them to go over what.
Absolutely, I mean, I, I did and she fixed it, you know, don't get me wrong, but it was kind of confusing when all of a sudden I have different amounts and I had to figure out.
Yeah, okay.
What happened? And I didn't realize.
She should not be deciding how, how this.
Allocates, yeah.
Expenses gets allocated. The $5,000, if, if this gets voted, $5,150 expenses.
Right.
She should not be deciding how that gets divided up. You should be telling her, I want 50 cents in here and 25 cents in there and $5,000.
But nobody came and asked me, I didn't know when they were doing any of it.
Absent that, she's got to enter it, so she takes her best shot.
Anytime between May 17th and July 1st, she'll be setting up next year's books. And you should approach her. I don't think she feels, I don't think they feel the responsibility to approach you.
I would agree with you.
So the only thing that came out of my budget then was just the LL data, is what you're saying?
Right.
Yeah, just got moved to a different line, under Contracted Services.
And that's what I mean by.
But if that's indicative of the department heads, I would suggest that, yeah, the department head should be told to meet with the accountant to, so help her put in the budget into the financial system.
I think when, when that accountant started, the department heads were told that if you want to categorize your expenses.
Meet with her.
Get in touch with the accountant and tell her how to divide up.
She's here on, whatever days of the week she's here and.
Or you can do it over.
Maybe we should reemphasize that, Karen, let her do.
Because if, if that's a theme that we're hearing.
She'll put her memo out for the end of the year and we'll, she'll follow up with sitting down, because she did it last year, she, she, it's part of our agreement with them that she has to meet with the department heads, so.
I would make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
We're going to go to the town administrator.
Oh!
Well, I just wanted to make, just have, take this time to make sure we're all set for town meeting logistically, not so much the warrant and stuff, but I met with, me, Chris and Sarah went down to PDVRS Auditorium and met with Gretchen, got a good look at it, I was telling Brian earlier, the backdrop of Alice in Wonderland plays and, is in the back, it's kind of cool. But, so we, we got the tables, the chairs, the podium, you know, all that stuff's good to go, bring the flags. We have all the handouts, required handouts for the meeting.
Except Finance.
Except what?
Well, I haven't made mine up, I usually do my own printing and.
Oh, right. Well, if you'd like to give it to me, I can do that for you when you're done with it. I can print it for you and have it down there or whatever, just let me know.
Apropos that.
So, and then Ken, you're going to prepare and read the Select Board report, that's what we're understanding.
That is Article 1C on the first page of the.
Yes.
Warrant. Who's doing Article 1A?
What is that? Can you just read it, please?
I'm going to do that, the charity lot.
Yeah, Brian has the charity lot oral report, I provided that to him. Jane's going to speak on behalf of the Sixth Town Regional Planning Board. And then I did see Jeff Wilson today, and I just told him that Jessica Atwood would be in the audience and she is to be allowed to speak, sort of however that works, for, before Article 26.
If there are questions about the EMS, the 82,000 that will come up.
Yeah.
Matt Wolkenbryt will be in the audience as well.
All right.
And you should maybe let Jeff know that, recognize him as the go-to person if there's any questions from the town.
Is he a Northfield resident, or is he a?
I don't know where he's from.
He's not a Burnson resident.
He is not a Burnson.
He's not a Burnson resident. He's not a Northfield resident either. I think he lives in Montague.
Okay.
Montague?
And do we want to recognize Jordan and/or Patricia?
No.
Can I finish?
Okay, I'm good with that.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Nope, okay, so.
Before you leave the, there you go, what's his name, EMS director?
Matt Wolkenbryt.
Don't you think he should be asked to speak, period?
We can do that, we can request that of Jeff real time.
Yeah.
Jeff will allow it.
Sure.
Because I think, I think that a lot of people.
He has made presentations at the Northfield meeting already, so.
Right, I didn't, I was having a hard time with the sound on their meeting, so.
One of us can just say at the time that article's coming up.
Yep.
Mr. Moderator requests.
Well, it's, it's a table, it's in the Contracted Services article.
It'll explain the big increase.
So you want me to tell Jeff to?
Yeah, keep him short.
Okay, three minutes, Matt, you got, I'll tell him you have three minutes.
You'll let him know, okay.
I'll, I'll let Matt know, you let.
We just have to remember to give Jeff a nod at that particular article to say.
Okay.
Right.
Sounds good.
So we don't.
What's his name again, please?
Matt Wolkenbryt, W-O-L-K-E-N-B-R-E-I-T.
And he is the new chief? Is he the EMS chief?
I'll get you his.
EMS director?
Director.
EMS director, all right.
I got his card.
See, there you go.
Oh, that would be great. I'll make a copy of it.
EMS chief, here.
Thank you.
Pass that down to her.
Look at you, that's pretty high.
Take a picture?
Can I have it right?
No.
Probably do.
The are.
He does.
See that?
Correct, good job. I'll give this back to you.
Yeah, just take a picture, then you can give it back to us.
Anything else, Jane? Anything else about Matt Wolkenbryt?
No, I just thought when they, when the name came up, I thought he should speak because I think that enough of the town doesn't realize.
And if the school one does become contentious, Jordan and/or Patricia will be allowed to speak on the budget.
Patricia is allowed to speak by law.
Right.
Jordan is not. So if he wants to speak, then.
He'd be more the expert on the budget than Patricia, probably.
I made pla, I made, I made main placards because the Northfield meeting was at the same place, right? And they had like, anyway, I, I made main placards for everybody, Finance Committee, you know what I mean, so it looks a little more, because they just kind of had like painter's tape and, I don't know, I just, so I did that. So don't worry about.
Can you, can you give us the lineup across on the?
Well, we'll have the name placards there and I'll, of course, coordinate with you guys where you're going to sit, but.
The 1-2-3 Finance Committee, 1-2-3.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's going to be, it's going to be like, you want to explain it? It's like a V, right, Tyler? I can explain it, I think, but go, I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
I described Northfield as like more of a Last Supper, you got the podium in the middle and then 12 people.
But it's eat out, so you can see each other.
But it sounded like you didn't need as many tables, so it was going to be more like a checkmark.
Yeah, a checkmark.
Is your assistant clerk going to be there?
Yes, but she's going to sit down on the floor and observe.
It'll be on the stage, it'll be, of course, Jeff will be in the center. If you're facing Jeff, looking at him to the left, that'd be the table, be the town clerk and the town council. To the right of Jeff will be the, the Select Board and the Finance Committee.
All six of us?
Yep.
And yourself.
Maybe, I might be down on the floor, we'll see. I don't think it needs to be, I need to be up there, but anyway.
I would think you should be up there.
So that, so that's the checkmark kind of look.
Okay.
Historically.
Yeah.
The town coordinator sat between the Finance Committee and the Select Board.
Who sat next to me last year?
Well, I sat on the end last year.
Two years ago.
It wasn't like that at all.
I will figure it out.
You're the buffer, so we don't kill each other.
That's right. We're not going to kill each other. This is a very.
I know, we may be very far now, we need somebody.
All right, that's fine. So I just wanted to give you a rundown on that, eyes on the facility, I think we're all set, and the door's open at 8 o'clock, so.
8 a.m.
And would you like, would you like any of us there early to?
I'd say it'd be nice if you came before 8:30, I mean before, before 9:30.
Do you need help setting anything?
I, so far, I guess I'm the only one that's going at 8 o'clock to set up tables and stuff, so I probably could use a couple hands. Yeah, yeah, I could use your help.
Ballot box?
I'll be there 8ish. That's to take the dogs out.